It is 5:30, so I will call our meeting to order. Can you help me do roll call, please?
Steve Harris?
Here.
Danny Worfbeister?
Here.
Jane Harnell?
Here.
Nicole Jacob?
Here.
Carol Luntow?
Here.
Great, thank you. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval. Someone?
We're gonna need to take off the hometown Christmas.
We did second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
We'll need to take off the hometown Christmas. We didn't get some of the information until late, so we would like to have them present that all at once instead of multiple times. So we'll take that.
Item number six. Any other changes? I noticed one under number 11 that 111 East Broadway is not included on our resolution, so we either need to take it off the agenda or...
On 12?
Oh, excuse me, 12. Item 12. Yeah, thank you, I am 12. Let's take it off our agenda then, so it consists of the resolution. Just that, just 111 East Broadway. 111 East Broadway, that's a pocket park that wasn't included in the resolution. I think the resolutions didn't include the downtown properties, though they have that property, so, okay. Remove 111 East Broadway from item 12.
Oh, just that one?
Just one. Any other changes? Hearing none, I would... Let's vote on the modified revised agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, say aye. All ayes carried. Item number three, public forum. For items on or off the agenda, if you are on the agenda, you can talk at that time. Brenda, you here to say to talk? You guys are all for the agenda item? Okay? And you, did you get any input from anybody? Alright, item number four.
New utility rates are effective October 15th. They weren't on the... They'll be on the bill that we'll be receiving here shortly, so that will reflect the new rates. And also a reminder that winter parking ordinance takes effect November 1st.
Okay, item five, consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Who made the motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight?
I was second to that.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carried, all ayes. Alright, so then we are to item number seven, Little Critters Splash Pad. Turn it over to you. Three minutes, good enough.
We'll see if she can put it on two times.
Well, thank you all for allowing us to come and speak at tonight's meeting. Today, we are proposing for a splash pad here in the town of Paulina. So just to introduce ourselves, I'm Creighton Strew. I originally grew up outside of Branville, Iowa, just down the road. Then I married Damon Strew. Last fall, he was a 2016 graduate of South O'Brien. I graduated from the University of Iowa this spring, and we bought a house here in town. Damon works for Soil View, and then I just took over Dr. Rhodes' office about a month ago. And then we had a little boy, Crosby, back in July.
And I'm Brett Nelson. So Creighton is married to my brother Damon, so we're sisters-in-law. I married Cody Nelson about three, a little over three years ago. And then we have a two-year-old, Tatum, almost four-month-old named Keegan from this summer. And then Cody works at Iowa State Bank in town. I work as a nurse in Cherokee, and we also live in town here. So both Creighton and I are both here for the long haul, so we're just looking to tell you a little bit about something that can hopefully better our town.
So this summer, Brett and I were on maternity leave together, so we would spend our days at each other's houses hanging out or walking around town, going to parks. But over time, we found ourselves getting a little bored, and we're like, what else can we do? So we would pack up and go to nearby towns, and we were always looking for outdoor activities. So we would go to pools or splash pads. But we had to travel to this. The nearest pool is about 30 minutes away, no matter which one you go to. Splash pads are about 45 minutes away. So we're just looking for the solution, a free, fun activity for our kids and others to enjoy in town. We put out an online petition on Facebook on a few different pages about a month ago, and we received over 250 signatures on that petition. A lot of them were from surrounding towns, Sutherland, Primgar, Granville. However, there was also some from a lot further away, like Des Moines, Sioux Falls, Omaha. And I think that shows that people who aren't currently living here but come visit grandparents, things like that, would also utilize this while they are visiting. About two-thirds of those signatures were age ranges about 20 to 40, so those are probably people who actively have children and would be utilizing the splash pad. However, about a third of them were 40-plus, which is more fallen to like the grandparents' age range, that they could use it when their grandkids are here in town visiting. So since a splash pad is kind of a newer concept, we just wanted to explain to you what a splash pad is. So it's a cemented area that has two zones in it, the actual splash zone, which has the elements to it, and then a five-foot sidewalk going around it. So there's two elements to the splash pad. The elements would be like these actual structural pieces that like spray, dump, splash water, or ground spouts, which are... The best way to kind of explain them is like a little sprinkler in the cement, and they spray water in various directions and at various pressures. So this summer, Brett and I... You can go to the... Yeah, I'll go to the next one. This summer, Brett and I worked with Outdoor Aquatics. They're out of Gretna, Nebraska, to design a proposed splash pad. Outdoor Recreation, excuse me. So we went with a bug theme, so that's where Little Critters, the name, came from. So how the splash pad works is there would be a little post here that has a button on it, so the water does not continuously running. When you are ready to play in the area, you push the button and the water begins coming out of the elements. That time can be set for five, 10, 15, 20 minutes, however long we would like the water to run. After that set time, it turns off until the next person is ready to play, and then they can push the button to start the water again. In our proposed design, there are 11 different elements. So there's like things that spray, a little bumblebee, ladybug, some arches that you can run through. This, I call it like the cherry dump. They fill up with water and then pour out once they're full. On this side are some jet streams, so those actually rotate, so you can spray people with them. And we'll have some few other images of our proposed design as we walk through the presentation.
And then as far as our team, Creighton and I have kind of taken the role as project leads, so we've done all the brainstorming, done a lot of planning with outdoor recreation, kind of come up with these design proofs, and have thought about the future. How would we fund this project? What are the costs that go into this type of project? And then we have Kelly, who will be a good integral member of the team, because he'll be a big help with all the water. Once that... Once the project would get approved, we'd have some things for him to be responsible for that we'll get into on the future slides. And then we have Andrew in the back, who he's gonna introduce himself and talk a little bit about outdoor recreation.
Alright. So, my name is Andrew. I'm with Outdoor Recreation Products. We are the representative for Aquatics, which is out of Delano, Minnesota. It's a subsidiary of Landscape Structures, a play-around company. Landscape Structures and Aquatics are 100% employee-owned, and everything's manufactured in-house. So materials, labor, everything's US-sourced. And it's basically local to you guys, just a few hours up in, just outside of Minneapolis. We're excited to partner with you guys, and the ladies are doing a great job getting started on this. So we're, you can help out in any way you need, and yeah, we're just happy to be along for the ride.
And then hopefully, if this project were to get approved, Creighton and I would like to start a little staff committee to help us with some of the more fundraising tasks and things like that. But for right now, that's kind of who's all been involved in the project.
So who would all benefit from the splash pad? I think the obvious ones, as we've mentioned, are people who would actively be playing at the area, including children, parents, grandparents. However, there's a lot of events that come to town that they could also use the splash pad for. For example, like when Little League games are going on or slow pitch tournaments down at the park. It's another entertainment source for little kiddos when they're there. Out-of-town visitors, I think that's one of our number-one goals, is to draw people to our city. And as they are coming to the town, the splash pad, which we'll talk about our proposed location, close to downtown, they might then go over, eat lunch at JW's, stop and grab some groceries from Prairie Market. Also, the Food Truck Mondays we've been hosting in the summers, that might draw people to come grab lunch at the food truck and then also play at the splash pad. The daycare is in town. Being able to walk to the splash pad and give the kiddos some entertainment there. The school, they're always looking for reward days for their kids, so that would be a great opportunity for them as well.
When Creighton and I were thinking about where we would like the splash pad to be placed in town, the city park came to mind, the lake came to mind. We really wanted it to be for the city of Paulina, so we thought that the lake or the park was a great central location. That way, everybody's able to walk there if they'd like to. Good parking. The locations that we thought about at the park included right east of the playground here, in between the ballfield and the playground. That one was about 1,800 square feet. We also measured this middle section, which I think was about 1,600 square feet, but it did have some obstacles, like a garbage can that would've had to be removed. And then this far corner was about 1,400 square feet. Also had a couple obstacles with lights and some grills being close by. This corner up here, we also did consider, but we didn't even measure because there didn't seem to be much shade or parking in that area. So we thought this was the best area for partial shade, parking. And then Kelly also did mention too that it was the easiest place that he thought to get water to. And then, as far as when we would be open, City of Spirit Lake and City of Larchwood both have splash pads that we spoke with. They're both open, holiday to holiday, Memorial Day to Labor Day. Kind of easy to remember, and we thought those would be good days to do when the weather's the most appropriate. Hours, I'm not sure about Larchwood, but I know Spirit Lake's technically said 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is when they're open. We thought maybe 8:00 a.m. would be more appropriate because kids are up at the crack of dawn and they're ready to go. So we thought it'd be fun to have it open a little bit earlier. That way, there's something to do in the morning in town. So water would be set to go off only during these hours. And then, like Creighton said earlier, we could set it to only go off for certain minutes at a time, like five-minute increments.
And just want to mention, our proposed design fits the square footage of that location.
Yep. It's 1,800 square feet was the exact design. It might have to be modified a little bit just with how long versus wide it was, but the 1,800 square feet was the same as the design. And then, just a little comparison. Not that one's better than the other, but just to show a couple benefits of a splash pad versus a pool. One would be age-inclusive and disability-inclusive for the splash pad. So kids in wheelchairs or that use a walker or have any sort of mobility issue aren't able to use a splash pad because they're able to sit down. We saw little babies at the splash pad sitting by little crackling water. And then up until like early teenage years is when we thought that the kids would most be using the splash pad. And then after that, it maybe would be babysitters, older siblings bringing the younger ones to the pad. You don't have to pay anyone, no lifeguards or staff. You don't have to have a fence. You don't have to have like changing rooms or showers, all required by pools. There's less drowning risk, so no increased insurance costs compared to a pool. And then it also conserves water a little bit better, less runoff and evaporation.
I think we'd like for the splash pad as well. When me and Brett went to some this summer, we could have our little babies in the stroller and then take them, the older one. He could run freely and we didn't have to actively be with him. Whereas a pool, you actually have to be usually in the pool with them. Whereas this, I mean, some of them kind of do their own thing, which is nice. How the actual splash pad is designed, it's designed in a specific way. So this would be like the road, and then as you enter into that yellow circled zone, so that's the gentle activity zone, meaning it's for littler kids. Brett mentioned those little ground spouts that you could set a little one in front of to play with. Then as you move further into the splash pad, that middle zone is kind of that middle age zone. There's a little more dumping. The pressure's a little higher on the water. And then as you move furthest back into the splash zone, it's gonna be for those older, more interactive areas. So it's purposely designed in a specific way like that.
Responsibilities. So as far as proposed city responsibilities, these are all just proposals. But the water source within 10 feet, which we mentioned earlier, Kelly thought that this would be about a $5,000 project. So that's kind of the one responsibility of the city prior to installation, is the water source needs to be within 10 feet of the splash pad. And then after that, outdoor recreation is kind of responsible for everything else, lining everything up, lining up installation. The city or volunteers would be responsible for cleaning of the splash pad if needed. Good power wash session at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, and then just leak blowing as needed or power washing or hosing off as needed. Minor maintenance, and then spring startup and fall winterization would be necessary as well. We'll kind of get into those couple things in a little bit, but the first-year outdoor recreation does send someone out for first-year spring startup and first-year winterization. And then they provide manuals for minor maintenance issues that are always available for ongoing customer service if there's something that arises outside of anyone's comfort zone.
So next, we're gonna go through the cost of the building the splash pad. Before we go through that, we just want to say that this is what we would fundraise for or use grants for. So this money wouldn't be directly from the city. After it's built, then it would be the city's yearly cost that we want to emphasize to you all today. So the first cost is for the actual elements. Those 11 elements that are in our proposed design, and those come to $142,000.
Secondly, the mechanical equipment. So on all of the next few slides, there'll be division between conventional domestic system versus recirculation system. So I'll kind of give a little bit of an overview of what two differences those things have. There's obviously quite a big cost difference between conventional domestic system and then recirculation. For conventional domestic, it is a lower cost now. The mechanical box can be above or below ground, and we'll have a picture of that. Doesn't recirculate water, so any water that would be used, that's kind of what water you would be paying for. So higher water bill, which we'll again get into. And then recirculation system, how that works is the kids push the button, the water is used, the water is drained, it gets filtered and treated chemically, UV disinfected, and then it recirculates. So there's very minimal water usage. So significantly lower water bill. And again, that you could have an above or a below-ground mechanical enclosure. That's quite a bit larger, and I'll show you a picture of that. So this one's the conventional domestic system. The box is about 10 feet long and I believe 3 feet deep, and then 3 or 4 feet tall. And it does have to be pretty close to the pad. Recirculation system, a lot larger mechanical room because it has all the different controls for the chemicals and everything that would need to be adjusted, so someone can actually walk into that one. So again, above or below ground. Andrew did mention that most people do above ground just because it's a lot easier to access, and then anyone that would need to enter it wouldn't be upset at you that they always have to go underground. So that's kind of the looks of the inside of that. That one is about 20 feet long, 7 feet tall, and I believe 4 feet width.
And then for the conventional system, it's a little under $5,000 for delivery, and the recirculation a little over $20,000 just because there are more parts to that. Again, we're talking with Andrew, the delivery service. We have a lot of local people who have semis that we could ask for volunteers and donations for them to pick up the equipment and bring it to town for us.
And then as far as installation goes, as far as the timeline, once we have the funds, approve the design, and everything's good to go, they can come and install within six to eight weeks. So just depending on the season. If we had everything in the wintertime, obviously, we couldn't until the next spring or summer. But if we got it approved in the spring, they could start six to eight weeks after that building, and then two to six weeks total for installation time. What that includes is the cement, the pouring, the plumbing. A little difference again between conventional and recirculation. Andrew did mention that if you would like to get your cement donated locally, that would be a cost saving, but that they do have special people to pour the cement just because it's a little bit more specialized to pour over all of this plumbing. So they use people that they always work with that always pour splash pads, but we could use some local cement.
And then as previously mentioned, to get that the water source within 10 feet of the splash pad would be roughly a $5,000 cost.
As far as insurance goes, the splash pad would already be covered under the city's current policy because it is considered kind of like a park. And then if the city wished to ensure the value of the equipment, it would be 35 cents per $1,000 of equipment. And then we have Marcus in the back if you have any questions about insurance. And then we also dated out warranties. Aquatics has all of these listed on their websites. There's one, two, five, and 25-year different warranties going over everything that they cover.
I just have one thing to add there. At the beginning, she said no increased cost. That is on the liability side of the insurance. I think she missed the word liability. So I just want to...
I did miss that word.
Say that one more time. There would be no increased cost for the liability side of it, but that 35 cents per $1,000 of coverage is if you would want to insure the equipment like you do the play-around equipment.
And then getting into yearly city costs. So this is conventional domestic system, so the type of mechanical equipment that does not recirculate water. For water, the national average that we received from Andrew is $7,500 a month, and that would be if the water was running for eight hours straight every single day. We didn't think that was very realistic to expect out of Paulina, so we averaged that maybe two hours per day it would get used if we had it, you know, set for to go off five minutes at a time. And maybe early on, it would get used a lot more than two hours, but then bad weather days, and as the newness of it wears off, we just thought we'd average two hours a day. So with that two hours a day, the conventional domestic system uses 158 gallons per minute. And then Michelle kind of helped calculate how much that would cost, and that came up to $86 a day based on how much the city pays for water. So $86 a day for 14 weeks, which is Memorial Day to Labor Day, came out to $8,428. Electrical costs, just $15 a month, so $45 for three months. And then daily labor, we know that there is a seasonal employee for the city that helps with maintaining the park, so we thought that it would be okay to include that he could stop by the splash pad, take a look, see if it needed a little leak blow. Really, that's all it would be is just putting eyes on the splash pad, making sure it's okay. So we just estimated 30 minutes a week just to take a look at it, leak blow as needed, and do a good power wash at the beginning and end of the year. So that, we estimated about $140 for the year. And then spring startup is a one-day job, so $160. Winterization, a two-day job, plus the ANFREs of $160 a year, which is an average, for $480. So overall, the yearly cost for this one would be a little over $9,000. And then next one is the cost for the recirculation system. So the big area you're obviously saving a lot of money would be the water. The recirculation system uses 233 gallons per minute, but only 5 to 10% of the water is lost to evaporation. So they estimate on average $45 a month, so only $135 for the whole summer for water. Spring startup is a two-day job, $320. Winterization's the same with the ANFREs, so $480 for that. And then a couple other costs that the conventional system did not have would be the chemical cost of $360 a summer, electrical cost up to $540 a summer. And then the daily labor would be a little bit more intense because they would need to go into the big mechanical room and check the strainers, filters for debris, and to adjust any chemical levels as needed. So we estimated still the 30 minutes per week for leak flowing and power washing as needed, and then 30 minutes per day, five days a week, at $20 an hour, to come up with $840 for the whole summer for labor.
So this is the total cost, the conventional, a little under $300,000, and the recirculation, a little over $500,000. How would we decide which one? There's pros and cons for each one. A lot of it is probably going to be how much we can fundraise and get grant money for. And then also deciding with that recirculation system, the room for that larger mechanical system. What are towns that have splash pads using? Spirit Lake has the recirculation system. However, they have a lot more tourist attraction, a lot more people using their splash pad throughout their season. Larchwood has the conventional domestic system. Andrew kind of mentioned a lot of the Midwest is using that conventional system just because it's a shorter period of time throughout the year it's being used, rather than in a warmer climate, it's being used a lot more. So pros and cons to each one. And then how will we pay for this splash pad? So going back to that startup price is what we would be fundraising for, getting grants for. And then the city costs would be after that for the yearly.
And really, the only, the main reason for us talking about these next few slides is just to kind of show you how much we've thought about this project and to show that it is attainable for us to raise this money. And none of it, besides the yearly city costs, would be any money that the city would have to pay for. It would all be through fundraising grants, and we'll put a little bit more here.
So that first thing is grants. Me and Brett have done some research looking into possible grants that we could put in applications for. To apply for these, we would need the final dollar amount that we were trying to raise, the actual plan. So we're not actively doing that yet. And this is something that if it's approved and we start working on with that committee, we start working on with that committee, we would look for some guidance writing these grants.
As far as donors go, we thought it would be fun to display the donors in the park with some sort of donor recognition wall, have different types of fun donor clubs relating to our bug theme, like a butterfly, lake bug, bumblebee club, just to encourage donors to donate in a different way. We know there's lots of donation projects going around town. There is lots of young families moving back to Paulina right now, too. So different things might speak to different people, so it doesn't hurt to ask. And then to encourage larger donors, we have kind of all of our elements listed out here, and after the design gets approved, we would have Andrew give us an itemized cost list for each element. So each element would have a specific cost attached to it, and then if somebody wanted to have a little bit of special recognition and put a larger donation into this project, they'd have a little engraving in the cement pad next to that element.
And then we also brainstormed various fundraising ideas. We tried to think of ideas that other organizations aren't currently doing for fundraising ideas. We looked at doing some like 5Ks, golf tournament, pickleball tournament, bags tournament. One thing that we thought would be really fun, and there's not always a ton of events on that night, is doing a New Year's Eve party at the Legion, having like a Hawaiian beach summer theme to go with the splash pad.
As far as our timeline goes, Creighton and I first started thinking about this project in August, so we did the planning, talked with Andrew a bunch, talked with the city of Paulina a little bit, and then October, now presenting to the city, and then if approved, we would hope to get started right away with fundraising, grant applying, grant research, spreading the word. If it were to get approved, like Creighton said, hopefully our biggest fundraiser project of the year could be our New Year's Eve bash, and then, not that this is an attainable deadline, but Andrew did mention the earliest that construction could begin is next summer, just to give you kind of their timeframe. Our goal, more realistic goal, would be fall 2026, summer 2027, just to have more time to do some research on grants, apply for the grants, spread fundraising events throughout the year, rather than try to cram a bunch in all at the same time, reach more businesses and private donors that may be interested in the project, and then just to plan more thoroughly with the city and outdoor recreation and anybody else involved. Here's some pictures of my Zantita, my splash pad, loving it.
I even ran through the water that day. So why now? As Brett mentioned, we have a great group of young friends having children, and we are the force to change our city now, add to it. We have a beautiful new addition going on to the school, so we just really want to attract people to come see our town, but also move here and have fun activities.
One other thing we did forget to mention, too, is that along with the grants, we did hear that the pickleball courts got approved for the city, so any grants could be going towards both those things, and definitely different crowds are attracted to a splash pad and a pickleball court, so it'd be nice to have a big variety of ages in our park.
Yeah, we like to open it to, any questions, we'll try to answer to, so give us Andrew to help us with some more of the technical questions for anyone.
Any questions you have? Where does your runoff water go on the conventional or whatever?
So there's drains in the cement. I don't know exactly where the water goes from there, but yeah, there's drains within the splash pad that it was running to.
Water supply in the sanitary or storm sewer.
You can run into storm sewer, or if you have a retention pond, you can run it into that, too. It doesn't need to be treated, it's just considered a problem.
So you wouldn't have to test water or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. How long has Spirit Lake had theirs? Do you have any idea?
I was looking on their city's Facebook page, and I believe it was around 2016 that it was built, so almost 10 years.
It has been there a while, but I didn't know. I've seen it.
So does runoff water go to the center of the pad, then, or are there more than one?
I think this one has 2 or 3.
Okay.
Depends on the size of the pad, but I think this one's 3.
And what about around the pad? Because does all the water stay on the pad, or does it get out and go around on the edges of the pad?
So the whole pad is surrounded with 5 feet around and sidewalk, and we, as long as the ones we've been to, we just noticed the water staying within the pad. It wasn't on the sidewalks at all. So all of the ground spouts that Creighton was talking about, one example would be if it's right here in the ground, it would shoot, and it would be going into the pad. Nothing is spraying outside of the pad purposely. The only thing that would maybe have created a splash in the Spirit Lake one is the buckets when they dumped over, because they were closer to the edge. Our design's in the middle, so.
So with the circulator building, do you know how big that is?
Yep, it was 20 feet long, so it'd be underground, like I said, or above ground. 20 feet by, I believe, 8 feet, and then 7 feet tall. So that one you walk into. Compared to the conventional system, it's just the box, and it's 10 feet long, 3 feet deep, and 3 feet tall approximately.
So that's not included in your 1,800 square foot, then?
No, that would be, that would have to be close by.
Do you know how much additional square foot is that?
No.
It sounds somewhat substantial.
Would we be able to use like the city building, the building that's already there, across the alley from the park, or not?
Andrew, do you remember how close? You told me that it had to be, usually they put it pretty close to the pad.
Yeah, usually you put it right on the edge. If you have a, we can do a retrofit into an existing building, but sometimes you're going to spend more time and money, and assuming that you have a whole wall for manifolds and you need drilling cores and all sorts of stuff, so. We can definitely look at that if that's the way you want to go, but.
And there was space on the sides because we couldn't make it any wider because there was trees that we didn't want to get too close to, but that doesn't mean we couldn't put one of the boxes down there.
If you do a donor wall, too, does it have to be open, the encasement? Or can you put a donor wall on one of those sides just to kind of make it a little bit more?
Cover it up a little bit?
Yeah, you can definitely dress it up a bit. We have a product called Digi-Fuse. Basically, we print onto steel panels, put a clear coat over it. Any graphic you want to print on that, we can do that. And it's really durable stuff, too, so I'll have a sample of it, but I take a knife all the time to it, and I can't scratch it, so it's good stuff.
Obviously, anything that would draw people to move to town, like our young families as well as people visiting town would be just huge for.
Yeah. One thing that we mentioned, too, is we were talking with my mom about it last night, about like Little League games, and my mom had said like, "Oh, but how would that draw people to town if they're just coming at night for that?" And I said, "Well, but then you get people go home and they tell their friend, they're like, 'Oh, we went to Little League in Paulina, and they had this. That'd be fun to go to our next day off together.'" And then they bring their friend to town, so. We have some businesses, especially with JW's open now for lunch, it'd be awesome to have people come do some shopping at the hardware store, Broadway Marketplace, go to the grocery store in town. We also mentioned, we forgot to mention, too, the campers that do come to town. Dollar General might be their only stop in town, so something to bring them actually into the heart of our town would be awesome.
Right now, you're not fighting on any money from the city except for those continued maintenance items?
Yeah, yearly costs.
And which one are you kind of really thinking about doing? The conventional or the recirculation, or are you going to wait till you see what your gallons are?
I think it would really depend on if we had larger donors.
Okay.
Yeah. With the recirculation, too, though, we have, it would be for the city worker to learn like the treatment, the chemicals, that part is the only other. It's a little bit of a con, in my opinion, because it just takes more from them to upkeep it as well.
So once the pad is built, then the committee or whatever has no responsibility, is that where you're heading, and then it falls for the city?
Well, a city worker, yeah, to keep it, maintaining it.
Andrew had mentioned that it was really the big thing is just a good power wash at the beginning of the year, a good power wash at the end of the year, and then just walking by and making sure everything looks fine. Maybe an occasional leak flow in the fall, but really leaks aren't falling too much before Labor Day, and then just a power wash if any sort of algae or anything. He just said it's kind of dependent on what your water's like, if it would need a little bit more upkeep.
Have you talked to other cities as far as, you know, it doesn't need any staffing, does that work? Well, the Spirit Lake or Larchwood have anybody overseeing it? Does it work fine just as a parent supervised?
At Spirit Lake, they did have like a rules sign posted outside of their splash pad. Said like, "No dogs, no like roughhousing, no bicycles," things like that, and no food or drink. So it did have a little guideline, and then at the bottom, it just said, "Contact city if seeing violations occurring."
So I think that'd be something we went on to.
Yeah, and we did hear that, too, that possibly there is maybe going to be some cameras installed at the city park, too. The thing that Andrew brought up about the donor sign would be nice, that it's not anything that could be damaged, but cameras, I'm sure would encourage all the kids to not be roughhousing after hours.
Not roughhousing, vandalism you want to prevent, yeah, as much as you can, kind of handle it.
It would be nice to have cameras down there for that, you know, reason, too. We had the chamber house, scout house, that's been vandalized, other things have been vandalized.
We just fixed the bathrooms at the concession stand.
Because those were vandalized, too? And we've got internet down there that is reachable, correct, for that, or you can hardwire that for?
The main hub for TCA is right across the street there, so.
So that would be, that would be an exciting thing like that. Regardless whether we did it or not, to get yourself a couple cameras.
So Marcus, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
In the email back and forth between Joshua and yourself.
Yes.
He recommends that the person, or is there be adequate supervision provided at all times that the area is open for use, and that the person doing the supervision be adequately trained in pool safety, first aid, and emergency and concierge?
Yeah.
Can you address that?
So there were several items on that list, and my direct response to that was clarifying that those are recommendations and not requirements. And his reply following that was, "Yes, these are just recommendations." So I did tell Brett, and you guys already mentioned amongst yourselves, that it would be excellent, especially for insurance purposes, that there's a whole list of items on a rules board or whatever that lists what's acceptable and not, just to prevent any sort of vandalism, liability issues, but they are just preventative measures.
Even those two that I just read?
Yep, yep. Do you have the?
They're not required, just recommended.
Do you have the back and forth email thread, or just that one email?
No, we got it.
What pages are that?
So it should be the direct response following that email. I asked him if those were recommendations or requirements, and he did say those are all recommendations.
I think a lot of those companies need to state those recommendations just for that.
And they don't all have to be, those are all not required to be listed. Those are just what he sees most commonly, and that the insurance company would probably prefer to see, and then a list of 100 more if they really had any say in it, but those are the ones that he listed off for me to give these gals.
Do you have any idea how long Larchwood has had theirs, and what their setting is in comparison to this versus Spirit Lake's?
Theirs is more recently built, I think within the last 5 years or less, maybe even 3.
I thought that theirs was in circulation, too.
Well, I'm using conventional.
I thought theirs, I haven't written down on my phone, but I've read.
Have you seen theirs?
I've seen pictures of theirs.
Do they have theirs fenced or not?
Nope. Yeah, no fence.
I knew that I've seen online or anywhere, don't.
Yeah, no fences required. Like a lot of pools, you have to have like the separate showers, you don't have to have that. With a splash pad, the, it's, you maybe get a little puddle of water standing up, you don't have like any standing water really. And like I mentioned with Tatum, I felt very comfortable turning my back to him and letting him play on his own, and looking at the littler babies. So I felt very safe with it, whereas, yeah, pools can't do that. Maybe you run and scrape your knee in a splash pad. I would see being one of the biggest risks, but very.
Sure.
Yeah.
I do that walking.
I presume that you put down some sort of a surface that doesn't get slicked around there?
So typical surfacing would just be a standard medium room finish. I think we've discussed some surfacing options. We have a roll-on that you can do, a rubberize with a little bit of agri in it, different colors, design, whatever you want to do. It's not too expensive. If you want to go to the next level, we have a product called Pebble Flex. It's kind of like, it's a trowel-on product. It's plastic beads that you can pick the color and all sorts of design stuff with it. If you, Omaha Henry Dorrilly Zoo has it at their splash pad, but your pricing's going to jump quite a bit for, to put out surfacing. But most people just run standard medium room concrete, and you know, it's just like running on what they meant, so.
And Orange City has a small one. Jean and I were over there the other day, but it was closed.
The Serp Park by the hospital, that you were talking about? There's a few ground spouts. The ground spouts, they don't have any actual physical elements.
No, because everything was gone, and it was all cleaned up.
Yeah, there's just a couple little pieces on the ground, but it's like sprinkled to the end, essentially.
Oh, is that what it is? We didn't see any, because I knew I see Spirit Lakes and there's no equipment.
No, yeah, they don't have any of the actual above-ground elements.
Okay, just for example.
They can just chase the water around, shooting out of the ground and stuff.
Yeah.
I've been to simply quite a bit, they just have cement, I think just a medium brush, but there's a fence then, but it's also part of the pool, so I'm assuming that's just permission.
It's over by the ground doors, kind of.
Yeah, Akron, we know our younger brother's girlfriend is a lifeguard at Akron, they have a splash pad incorporated into their pool, and she says that part of the pool is actually usually busier than the pool itself.
Well, I could see people coming from the lake a lot, you know, just because of the little equipment and all that there.
So the elements that we would have, do they have a life expectancy, or are they, is it something that would last for 15, 20 years, or is it permanent, or?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the warranty of most of the stuff's going to be up to 25 years. Life cycle, I mean, splash pads are kind of newer products, so we don't really have something that's, you know, 30 plus years old. But I would say 15, 20 years, you're just getting, like, you should be pretty solid. The aquatics is one of the only places that does put their full warranty out there, so hope fraud, look at it. And then availability of parts is 2 weeks. Other places are importing it from Canada or from Europe, so you could be weeks and weeks for just shipping. Our stuff, you know, we can get replacement parts within 2 weeks, no problem, so.
And I think you would also mention to me, I can't remember after, or what warranties this is included under, but that potentially if anything got too paint, too worn off, that you could send an element back to get repainted if it were to have that sort of damage.
Yeah, so if you do want to refinish it, we've had it happen a few times, people with really hard water, they want it refinished, take everything down in the fall, package it up, send it up, they'll refinish it for you. So any colors you want, they'll.
I would say that, we went to Spirit Lake, they, it all looked very good, there was just a few little pieces of paint chipping off was the only noticeable thing I saw in theirs, just about 10 years old.
So that repainting, is that covered in the warranty, then, or is that an addition?
It is not covered in the warranty. I'm still trying to figure out the right person to ask on that, what the pricing would be. What I was told last spring was they would do the paint work and everything, you just have to cover freight for the materials, but I still need to get that confirmed.
And where does it go down to, then? Down to Omaha or to Minnesota?
It would go to Minnesota. Everything's manufactured there.
Looks like if there's any coverage, it's under the 2-year, if you read that. Finishes doesn't cover clouding paint or coat.
Oh, I hear, yeah. And is it something that they use like a special paint for? Is it something that someone in town could paint or?
Yeah, it's automotive grade, uh, paint, but we use standard RAL numbers. Um, so we have had people, um, repaint things, playgrounds or splash pads. Anytime you start altering something from, um, from the original installer, you can, you might step into a different warranty. Um, but the, the durability of the, of the paint and the, like, you're probably not gonna see that for a good number of years before it becomes an issue. So it wouldn't be like every season, take it down, repaint it, is that the kind of thing?
Okay, anything else you can think of that we need and, you know, what, what would you need from the city and what would be your hopeful time? You've got your timeline, but I presented this to the city, you know, how do we keep it moving forward for a decision that meets your timeline?
Um, the sooner that we can get it approved to at least start our fundraising and grant writing, um, the faster we can get the project going. So, yeah, we mentioned the big fundraising project I would like to do is the New Year's Eve party, which is only about two months away, which would require some planning. Um, so yeah, just to get it approved so we can at least start fundraising for, um, and like Brett mentioned, the splash pad, but I know there's some other updates that we would like to do at the park as well. Um, so looking at incorporating some of the grants, um, for exact.
So if it would be appropriate to be on your next agenda, we would like that, if that's enough time.
We need council. Okay, thanks for the.
If, um, I don't know, you guys showed one timeline, if you haven't reached a fundraising milestone, what happens to the money or what are your intentions at that point?
Um, just like we've kind of mentioned a few times, um, we know there's other proposed projects at the park, um, and a funding possibly in the Parks and Rec, um, of Paulina, um, for future use, yeah. Our timeline isn't set in stone, um, just good to have a goal in mind to get us on track with everything.
And you could just raise those funds until you do get them?
Yeah.
Maybe it's five years, but a splash pad is still going to be needed, or it's still gonna be exciting in five years from now?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything fun and new exciting in Paulina, so.
All right, exactly, yeah. Well, thanks for all of your work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation, ladies.
Thank you.
So just logistically, if each of you council members are thinking about this, Michelle, do they just send, do they send you items, questions, to kind of incorporate a bullet point list of things we might want to discuss at the next meeting? To potentially make a decision in the early? Okay.
Okay. If you do that soon enough, I could, um, if you guys have more questions, I can forward them on to Brett.
Mm-hmm, okay. Sorry.
Yeah.
That'd be good. All right, thanks again.
Thank you all, thank you.
Gretna, Nebraska.
Uh, no, the one outside of Minnesota.
Delano.
Delano.
Delano, I've never heard of.
That's, you haven't, it's a southern west of the two cities.
Really?
Well, we know, we're a little safety in a hell of a.
D E L A.
Never heard of that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's for real.
Okay.
It's a really intense, what you're saying?
Yes.
Real place.
West, pretty west, um, I would say, three or four, welcome, yeah. Brother had a little residential there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
All right, we will move on to agenda item number eight, WAPA contract. I would first of all entertain a motion to approve the resolution to approve WAPA contract. For the second weekend discussion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
And you, you should have the resolution on your desk, it's on the backside of the lagoon change order. This is just out in the south. So if any made a motion. So if you would wanna re-sign the resolution, any case?
Yep, resolution to approve WAPA contract that pertains to the newly constructed control building and switch gear within Paulina substation.
All right, any made motion to a second?
A second, Jean.
There's also some information in your packet, you probably read the, the letter related to that. There's no additional cost, it's, is that right?
Sixty-five.
Hundred sixty-five hundred.
So is that, is that additional on top of what we've, um, done already with the switch gear? I just don't know if anything's built into the switch gear, if it's added, so this is.
I mean, this is, aside from the switch gear, but I mean, this was brought up before we started the switch gear project. This is the meter that, like the revenue meter that we get charged from Missouri River to know how much electricity we have used. So I guess if we don't approve this, that one one five million dollars would just sit there?
That would be good.
No danger.
That would not be good.
We're gonna have a few acres, we don't need three.
We don't need more, no.
So Kelly, just give me some brief, how does the DOE and the WAPA and the city all work? Yeah, why is, why is the DOE involved? It sounds, it seems to me they did the letter agreement, cause it's on there, yeah, Department of Energy.
Energy, yeah.
Well, I mean, we get our electricity from WAPA, which is a government, they're a federal.
Agency.
Agency.
Okay, okay.
So DOE is WAPA, right?
Yeah, right.
WAPA's an administration within DOE?
That's what I see, so. Then later in the second paragraph in the agreement, it says FES contract, do you know anything, what that is?
Where's it at?
It's in the second paragraph, about halfway down.
First page.
Contract number twelve dash U G P R one oh two three.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the FES stands for, if you know, I didn't, I don't know.
Is that on energy services?
That could be.
I don't, I don't know.
It doesn't say in the agreement, so we'll just move on. And then the last thing I noticed, it says something about a date stamp. Does somebody have the original that has the date stamp on it?
We don't have one with the date on it.
No, this is, this is literally the draft, that's all we.
Not that draft, this is the actual letter received from them.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the, the email that came, it actually does say draft. But you, if, when I print it over, it doesn't show.
Okay.
No, I see.
So what, what action are we supposed to take tonight? Just approve the letter agreement? Even though it's just a draft? Just wondering. And maybe that's why they didn't put a date stamp on it?
Isn't it Dr. Sun?
What's that?
Isn't it Dr. Sun, sorry, I don't approve it, so it'll date same, but.
That way?
When you do it digitally, Dr. Sun, that's the date it's on, yeah.
Right.
It will generate.
But the way I read the agreement, it says if you don't do it within sixty days of the date stamp above, there's no date stamp above, actually agreement, so, anyway.
On the last page, it says what date that the contract stated.
It doesn't give a date, does it?
Not soon.
That's probably just a technicality, so.
Wouldn't that be that this letter agreement is executed on line, very last line?
Could be.
That would be the effective date of the agreement, but that wouldn't state when they start their sixty-day time block.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So basically what you're saying, Kelly, is that this has been planned for all along, it, you know, makes sense, it ties in. There's no additional cost except the sixty-five hundred dollars.
And that would go right on that building or in the building?
It'd be inside the building.
And this happens every couple of years anyway, right, that you switch out the meter or not?
No.
Oh, not, not, unless it's not good or whatever, you would do that.
I know probably five, six years ago, we got a new one in Earl, switch gear.
All right, any questions? Here, and then I assume you're ready to vote, we'll call it, please, Michelle.
Carol McCout, aye. Michael Jacobs?
Aye.
Jean Igeroff?
Aye.
Danny Workmeyer?
Aye.
Steve Harry?
Aye.
Pass that resolution?
Passes.
All right. Item number nine, um, sludge removal of unit cell one, we've talked about this.
In September.
In September, um, put it off, I thought it was useful to give an update on why this is on here now and what we, what your recommendation is.
Um, they were ready to come here, they were gonna move equipment last week and start this week, but this hasn't been approved, so I told them to hold off. I guess if we don't do it with this same contract, we're going to be getting it, it's gonna have to go off for bids and all sorts and probably be more expensive, my guess is.
It's gonna go up then, in cost? We don't have to go out for bid now because it's.
You've already got it.
Plus it's, it'll be a change order if they were to require it to add on. And we did talk about it, I even found it back and, and you felt it was definitely necessary in the big pond, right?
The, yeah, pond one is full of sludge.
Well, we got new equipment, I don't think we don't wanna not do it.
No, I don't think so either.
Cause then you're gonna probably start getting that crappy.
So with that kind of background, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. And if you need a second, we can discuss it further.
Okay.
Wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion.
I think we need to look at the funding issue instead of just approving the contract because if we remember back to when we originally did this, uh, to get the four hundred and, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, we had to go to a number of different funds in order to get that money. And from what I understand, uh, that's still in place, as long as everything goes according to the plan. Uh, we're still looking for someplace to put the forty-one thousand that we've already, that was a change order. And now we're looking at a hundred and fifty-four thousand, and we have no money to support that.
Did you and Marine find some money that you said could be used for something? I can't remember what it was for, when you was, were going through dollars?
Now that's not for this.
It wouldn't work for that? That's too bad.
It's too dollars.
Cause I, it's not a necessity though, is it Kelly, to do it?
Do we know, but.
I understand the increasing, you know, the increase and so on, but if we have no money to support that cost, we're kinda putting ourselves in, back in a big corner. Especially when we haven't really found a place totally for the forty-one thousand yet. And Kelly, does, does the number one cell have to run? Or would the other cells take care of us until?
I mean, they could still run like it is, just the capacity of our cells just keeps getting less and less.
Right, because of the sludge. And I'm not opposed to, to getting the sludge out of the cells, I, I just wanna make sure we can fund it.
Cell number one is where, the, the main aeration equipment is where, in cell number one.
Yep.
And what, did we clean a couple of smaller ones already?
We just did a little bit on two where it goes from cell one to cell two, there's a, there's a lot of sludge right at the end of the pipe there.
And that's been cleaned up?
Yep. Yes, I feel like it's just been neglected for a long time and now it's at a point where it's not that good.
And plus, if we don't do it now, you'll have to redid it and then it's gonna go up. We've got the new equipment.
Right.
We don't wanna ruin it.
I know, and I understand when you say we gotta have the money, I understand that completely, but.
So we have, the given is we have to have the money, where would we come up with the money to cover this, you know?
A billion thoughts.
Have to go back to the budget and try to find dollars, right?
Move something around. Is there no movement?
Remember, remember our budget when we started this year? One point five million in the hole?
You know, we've made the decision to, we've made the decision to, um, fund the switch gear ourselves. And that's gonna put us in a tight crouch.
That would say the two to one point five billion.
That's exactly what I've been saying. We need to, we need to sit down and we need to figure out where all of these projects are going to be paid for. Not just figure out what this one project is going to be paid for, we need to sit down with all of them and figure it out, whether we have to do the revenue bond or the, um, the GO, we just, we need to, we need to figure this out.
Yeah, and I've been saying that since I was asked to reach out to DA Davidson.
Yes.
And then that's good, if we can get a revenue bond or a GO bond, but then we still gotta come up with the money to pay it back. We gotta be able to make those payments, so.
But at, right now, we're, we're not doing anything.
No, we're just, we're sitting still.
Yeah.
No, we're not doing anything. With you guys, that Marines have been away, the way we're doing it now is just, it's not right. We're, we're, we're putting funds in a hole and not, and we don't know how, how we're gonna replenish them.
Keep, keep in mind, I, I, I see if I recall this right, so MRES two years ago had sent due a revenue bond for electric to replenish that fund. However, when we looked at the rates this year, it increased under full twenty percent, didn't MRES then say that, they said that we probably, we may not need to do that because we went to the full rate and then that would help replenish.
I'd have to look back, but that's not anything immediate, Phil, that's gonna take some time.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying the information that came back from them is, I read.
I'd have to reread what you said. I mean, we're, we're adding more and more dollars to the debt before we figure out how we're even gonna pay it.
Well, my concern is, what do we do the next time the situation comes around? Even if we got a GO bond and a revenue bond, we're still, you know, our dollars, we gotta really watch our dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah, the frustration that we're still trying to catch up with things that were approved in the past that are being implemented this year and therefore paid this year. Um, like, as we go forward, we wanna make sure that before we authorize any new big investments that we got that figured out versus the catch up that we're trying to work on right now.
And we did get approved, at some, I don't know what it was, to have a buyer money toll, something, they have a. And we did get approved at some, I don't know what it was, to have a buyer money toll, something, they have a boat that'll do a sonar. And it's gonna have to do the first three cells. And then they do have, I mean, it'd take a while, but they do have bugs and different, different things that we could at least maybe start working on the sludge.
So the sonar is to figure out how deep the sludge is or what?
To figure out the baseline where we're at and then, and I think it costs, I think it's gonna cost like fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars to have sonar. And then we can go from there and then see what kind of program they maybe wanna put us on, see how much it costs and then they claim they can get rid of, I don't know, three to six inches. I mean, it'd take a couple of years, a few years to get, get it down to where we need to, but.
How bad is it, the sludge? How many feet?
Probably, there's spots where it's probably two feet deep, four feet deep.
And cell one? Well, so we could all have a party and everybody bring your shovel and.
I don't think so.
At this point, I'm willing to do whatever, so.
So Kelly, if we don't do the project, what's the downside? I mean, is it gonna hurt the equipment or not?
Be true, it'll ruin our equipment.
I mean, our equipment is just blowing, and basically big pipes that lay on the bottom of the, well, lay on the top of the sludge, I guess, right now and blow air through the water. Let's just help oxygenate it for the bugs and whatnot to, it's not gonna hurt the equipment.
Well, that's good.
But at some point, we need to figure out something to do in there because it's, I mean, we have like a seven foot pond that's probably got three, four feet of usable space in it.
Not efficient.
But I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, we usually discharge in the spring and discharge in the fall twice a year and we have been, I mean, aside from when we had the flood, when we had to discharge, like a month after we already discharged. I mean, we just discharge twice a year, so.
I have money to pay for it, that's rule number one, but. So, so if it's approved, we got a funding issue. If it's not approved, then we'll wait till next year presumably and have to be bid out. Once we figure out the funding for it.
And there'd be engineering costs involved in that and, you know.
All over, yes.
When does this need to be decided on? I know like right away, but is it something that we can have a special meeting to sit down and discuss? What we need to pay for, what projects, the amount, where we need to, how we can pay for them?
And talk to Dan and see where we're at with the revenue bonds and make a decision. So we got dollars.
This probably, this probably at this point, if they'll approve it, they're gonna move on.
Sure they are moving on. They're gonna leave. Because they wanted to do it this past week already, right?
They wanted to start today.
Today? I knew you said they were.
At this point, they haven't moved in here, right? Yeah, they'll just take us off the schedule and go some to the cells.
Well, I'd really like to approve it, but I really know when you gotta have dollars to cover it.
Yeah.
Mary has a question.
It says here that they're charging, that among the charges for the hundred and fifty-four thousand includes the removal, the hauling, and then the land application along with the N R paperwork and permitting. How come the city wouldn't be getting paid by whose ever land the application happens to for that, for the material and the work?
The sludge you would be putting on the farmland, from what I'm told is, the farmers letting us put it on there is basically like a favor, it has real no nutrients. It's not like manure and whatnot.
And even with manure, my understanding is that the bulk of that cost is by the company getting rid of the manure. Farmers pay very little for the manure on, onto their land, even with that from a fertilizer standpoint. But the bulk of the cost is with the, like, for example, the dairy. Farmer pays, I think it's a hundred an acre or something like that, and the dairy ends up spending about a million dollars getting rid of it over and above that. So this doesn't have a lot of nutrient value in comparison, so.
And I've talked to Mark Lang and Scott, they're both willing to let us put it on their land right by the.
And that's another thing to consider, the fields are empty right now. Perfect time, we'll start to plant again, right?
Well, part of it would be push this off, I don't want to say push this off, but to stay on their schedule, but to give us some time to figure something out.
You think they'll work with you at all anymore or you think they're gonna?
I mean, I can call them tomorrow. Once the, once the ground freezes.
That's true, that's true. We're done.
Do they just lay it across the ground, Kelly, or do they actually knife it in?
Sounds like they're gonna knife it in. I feel like the springtime, as soon as the ground's good enough to get planted, there's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna be planting, so.
So basically, we're looking at a year to do it if we don't do it.
We don't do it now, that's small.
This looks like a good time of the year.
And what do you think for the increase? Ten, fifteen percent? Hard to say, more?
Yeah, we'll wait a year.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be holding the ballgame if we wait a year. We have to bid and engineering and.
During the fall, this workshop that Nicky said and try to get this figured out quick and decide.
Can you give them a call and just see how much time we have until he can? I don't think that the ground is gonna be freezing anytime soon, so we got a little bit.
Yes. I don't have months, but yeah.
Yeah. I think you're gonna call tomorrow.
But we're not gonna get our revenue or GO bonds in that time frame.
No, no.
There's just no way.
But.
So it's like I O U.
We can't write the law.
Maybe we could get a short term loan from the bank.
I'm just thinking that same thing. Should the bank don't, could we borrow something from there? I don't know what we got sitting there.
I wonder how much borrowing capacity we have.
Check with the bank.
Maybe we should do that. See what's there. Do we wanna try to figure out how to get the money or do we really wanna put it off a year and then we'll do the engineering costs and everything again?
It seems like a waste, but.
Well, we can, we can do a workshop focused on this, on all funding projects, we could do that within a week or days.
Talk to the bank too. See where we're at there. And see if you can get him to hold off a week or so, if possible.
Let's say a couple of weeks probably.
Yeah, let's probably go to our next meeting, probably.
Sure.
We have, especially if we call them sooner than that if we want.
Sure.
If we have the information, if we're ready to make a decision. You can maybe talk to Marine soon, she would be, I think, good to participate in.
I'd, it'd be, Marine shouldn't help much this month.
Oh, because of election, it's hurt she and Dola. If you could look up what, I mean, MRES recommended based on us, we see that twenty percent. Just for information. It's gonna be an electric thing anyway, but.
How come our meeting is the eleventh and not the fourth? November.
So it should be the fourth?
Should be the fourth, shouldn't it?
Should be the fourth.
All right.
All right, so we have a motion and second on the table. Do we want to act on it? Do we want to table it?
Well, I don't think we can move forward without knowing what quarter we're gonna be funding.
I kind of agree with that. But let's, let's get together. We table it, maybe we pull it off the floor yet or pull it off the table or?
Table it?
Whatever's in it though, would you?
Oh, with the table?
Just table it, table it. See what we can find for dollars. Before we say no, no.
Then, then we could either have a workshop or another meeting before the next meeting.
Right.
This is, you know, this.
That's, yeah, and see if they'll hold off a little bit yet.
But then if they won't, then what?
Because if we, if we table this to the next regular meeting, that's too far away.
Right, I think so too.
So a motion to table, we'll just table it if we, we would have a workshop, we can, you know, can't do anything to act on it. But we can do a special meeting at which time it can be removed from the table if you choose to do so.
Right.
So what's your wishes, counsel?
I think we need to table that.
I'll make a motion to table this resolution.
Move a second.
I'll second it.
All right, motion table's not the display of the motions, so let's do a roll call vote till then, please, Michelle.
Carol McCout?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Jeanne O'Grall?
Aye.
Danny Workmeister?
I'm gonna say no.
No to table yet?
Right.
Steve Herring?
Aye.
All right, four ayes, motion is table, passes. Okay, so let's agree to a date.
It was an election day, I'm not sure it's an election day tomorrow.
So do you want a workshop or a special meeting? Probably any of both.
I was just gonna say, I think both of them.
Workshop for good discussion, open discussion, et cetera. And at that time, we can set another meeting as soon as, forty-eight hours later, let's say.
Michelle, how long do you need to kinda get some stuff?
I'm saying we're gonna have to have just some time.
Right.
Because I still would like to discuss things with Marine.
Okay. Do you think she'll be able to come in? Because I know she normally comes in on Fridays, is that when she?
Whenever she can.
Okay.
But it's just been with early elections and.
Elections and all that, okay.
Give her a jingle in the morning and see. She felt really bad and she did say that this is something she really wants to do is to be the treasurer. She said, she feels bad and she's hoping that you won't think that she's the right person. I'm like, no, you're fine, don't.
Right, she's fine, we know she knows.
No. And we all understand because.
And she's got a full-time job.
A full-time job, yes.
Is it something that one of us can come in and help for anything to you to do something to?
Possibly, yeah. So I, she likes to do it on her own.
Well, we do.
I do, yeah.
Why don't you give that some thought tomorrow and then you can reach out to her if she has any availability or not? And how long you think it might take? And if any of us can come in and help in a way, and then just shoot out to us a recommendation for a workshop. You know, the sense of urgency is much better than us.
So we didn't set up a date yet though?
No.
Well, we're gonna talk to that first, okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
So she'll, she'll reach out to us in the next bit or two. All right. So item number ten, discussion on South Auburn School snow removal assistance request.
Mr. Radley approached me, wondering if we could help out with hauling snow away for them with the current construction they have, they have nowhere to put it. So they were thinking if we could, I don't know, I told them the most we could probably do, I could probably do is send a guy up the truck and have somebody load the truck and we haul it, but, I mean, that all depends on if we have a winter like the last winter, if we have a winter like two winters ago.
Right.
Because two winters ago, I mean, by the time we got done, we were starting to haul it again.
So is it just this year because of construction or is it ongoing because they don't have parking like they used to have?
I think it'd be this year, I mean, once, once the construction's done, they, they'll be able to put it on the south side of the parking lot there, they'll have places to put it once the construction's done, but right now they don't have anywhere with the construction going on.
So do they, do they pay us to do that then or how does that, how does that work?
It'd be, we'd, yeah, either charged by the load or by the hour or something like that.
We'll probably have to have that in place before we say yes or no because
Have they paid you always for that?
Doing all of this stuff for free.
Have they always paid you for doing it?
Who would have done it?
Oh, I thought you've always helped them somewhat. Never with the parking or anything? Oh, no, I thought you did.
Last time when I was on the council, we had this issue before, so we said no because liability issues.
Oh, okay. I thought I've been talked about it one time.
I mean, there are companies that they can contract with that do snow removal for business.
So that might be a veteran.
We're not overstaffed.
Yeah, and you're not, you don't have ten people sitting around.
What's gonna take priority to school or our snow or?
Right. I think that's where you must go.
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, when I talked to them, it said, we're gonna get our stuff done before we even think about yours, but.
Right, yeah, maybe just.
Which doesn't help that.
No.
We have new staff beginning this year, so. There will be some training involved.
True.
Have any other guys drove trucks, snow trucks? Yeah.
Trent's moved snow, Josh has. We already have it and, yeah, we'll get him there.
So it sounds like the lead is towards not, right, do it. Have a chat with the snow removal.
See if you can find some of it.
I think my plan is to put a lot of the snow around the Johnson property for them also, I mean, if they need somewhere to go with it, I wouldn't have a problem with them, whoever they contract to haul it there. There's gonna be plenty of room there.
Hopefully on the far ends, they don't put big ruts in the west end. Hopefully on the far ends, they don't put big ruts in the west end.
Sounds good.
Okay, you get that message back from them. All right. Item number 11. Entertained motion to approval city paid cell phone for superintendent utilities. You got information in your packet. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Here and there, I assume you're ready to vote. This one's just a motion, right? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye? Carrie, all ayes. Okay, item number 12, city lots. Get information in the packet. We've got a resolution on the table. Well, that's in the packet, sorry. So on page 21 is the resolution under which that resolution is to dispose of a property and set a public hearing as such, which is the notice that starts on page 23. So I would entertain motion as such. I'll move.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, all right, I, what do I need to read here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now therefore be resolved.
Now there, oh.
You don't have to read all the, all the descriptions.
Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Palina, Iowa as follows. The city council proposes to dispose of and transfer to Palina Development Incorporated the following described real, real estate, real property to, and it's...
And then if you go to the be a further resolved on page two.
Okay, be a further resolved at a public hearing shall be held on the proposal before the city council at 127 South Main in the city of Palina, Iowa at 5:30 PM on the...
Probably 12th day of November.
12th day of November 2024. And notice thereof shall be published as regards by law.
Okay, so we have a motion. James made a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion. We need to change the date. That's an approved date.
What, what Tisha said, but it was the...
Okay.
So that'd be the 4th of November as well, right?
Yes.
Right here, though.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's, that's, that's the day of passing of this.
That's my first there.
Sorry.
Yep.
So plan improvement has a copy of this. They agreed to the wording, accepting it that way. Both Tisha and Marty Weber said that that this resolution wouldn't have the covenants in there versus, Tisha's still working on a definition of completion on there, but that would be something that the council will decide on and then the plan improvement will deal accordingly based on the covenants that the council acts on. As noted before, these are the residential lots. Don't know if they determine yet how, but I guess proceed with the downtown commercial lots. So in the discussion, questions? I assume you're ready to vote. Roll call.
G. Carrick?
Aye.
Danny Workmeister?
Aye.
Gina Brown?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Carol, how about Paul?
Hi.
All right. And you? Two, item number 13, reports. Kelly?
Yes. We've been tree trimming, street sweeping, did some work on the overhead on Mamie. We got all the elbows for the distribution project completed that weekend so far. We had tried to clean up the tree pile. We have worked on the streetlights and we repaired the concession bathroom. Took the cement block and broke the door handles off and...
I have to say, what happened to it?
So now I got, I got a push and pull plant on there now with just the deadbolt, so maybe that'll be better.
What do they think they're gonna give the bathroom?
Some people know just to be stupid.
Just vandalism, yeah.
Yeah, it was supposed to be stupid.
Which then I do, I do think that we need to look into cameras.
I do too.
I did not know that had, that had happened because how many years has that been there? You haven't had this.
Maybe it's out of town or something.
Somebody tried to get in through the other door not too long ago too, wrote the word on the session statement.
Oh, really? Crazy, yep, I think you do need cameras.
Let's see, downtown streetlights, that's new, let's, uh, let's see. Street sweeping on the downtown rocks and everything like that, is that just still a little bit ongoing project as we're loosening up?
Josh and Trent Wood came in last Wednesday or Thursday at five or six in the morning and got four votes out for me and three of us.
We're definitely getting there.
Are you still peaking that off?
Yeah.
You and Brody have been working on the switchgear stuff?
Yeah.
They're getting those hooked up?
Well, I saw Brody and Trent working on some locations today, right?
Yeah, we're digging in from, yeah.
So how long is that project yet? Like when, so until that's done, we aren't switching over to our new switchgear, right? Because they've done distribution. What's, how much time is left on that?
Probably a few months yet. I can talk to, I'll talk to Schultz and I know solid work is coming back at some point too. We got some switching overview from the stuff we're still using to get switched over to the new switchgear building. There's gonna be outages involved with that and that'll probably be on a Sunday or something like that. We probably have half a dozen outages that one player or another coming up here pretty soon.
Should we start publicizing those now or don't you have date definitely yet?
We don't have definite dates yet.
Can we get the word out there before just to, because some people will be like, oh, I didn't know about this. Well, you can have added for the time.
Yeah, we can put out there that there will be outages in the near future.
Okay. And I can say for sure that Kelly, that the guys were sweeping because I had a resident bring in...
Bristles.
Bristles, no, bristles.
Have you ordered a new sweeper head yet? Because there, there's a lot of bristles around.
Those should be here next week, I think.
Are all of the lights, just because we have Fall Festival this weekend, are all of the streetlights working? No?
I'm gonna work on, I'm not 100% sure what's going on down this one. We worked on a little bit today and we're gonna work on it again tomorrow.
That's the corner one by Millworks Building and the theater, those two there. Most of, most of them are lit up on Broadway, maybe all, I'm not sure.
Those are the two we're working on today.
Really, it's just those two, I think, left.
So you have to do a new wiring or what do you all have to do?
We might have to, yeah.
Because you did some of that on Broadway, I know.
Yeah.
You were doing tree trimming, um, ash, do you still have some ash trees to take down?
We probably have, yeah, a dozen ash trees to take down and we usually like to do that when all the leaves are gone.
With your project, if it doesn't snow so much.
We have, I think, um, I think three in the past few weeks, three trees. Tremendous gonna take a while. We spent probably three, four of them a day, got two blocks, I think.
And what, what trimming does that?
Trimming so we can get our plow trucks down the streets without getting wrecked by branches.
There's that many of them.
There's a lot. The worst road is probably Logan or like north of the highway is probably the worst part.
So what did we decide of that? Because technically that's the residents' responsibility, right?
Right.
I don't think we ever really...
It is the residents?
It is, but I don't think we ever said, you know, like how we're going to...
I'm just doing it right now for my own personal...
We gotta be able to operate.
That's okay. I don't know. Should we send out letters or something? I mean, put on addresses?
Well, our city ordinance reads as that it is the homeowner's responsibility, but if, if a homeowner trims a tree in the parking, the city has to watch it.
And that's just crazy, yes. So if they gotta watch it, then they might as well do it, might as well do it themselves.
So focus on the worst stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
As a city, do we don't do anything for leaf, leaf removal, do we? I'm just wondering if we should, under our announcements, be asking residents to not rake their leaves into the street? They're not supposed to. Rake or blow. What's that? See a lot of blowers out there. Wait, rake or blow, that's right.
Yeah.
So let's add that to our communication list of reminding them that that's not what they can do.
So for the ones like down Main Street that are pretty bad, you know, we've got trailers that come down and it hits, hits those. Do we reach out to those homeowners and tell them it's your responsibility? And if they don't have anybody to come in and trim those, will they pay us then? Is that how that, how that goes?
For branches?
Yeah. For tree trimming?
For tree trimming.
I mean, I guess that's up to you guys. I'm, I'm personally doing it right now because, yeah, I need to get my plow trucks.
For your purposes.
Any of the plow trucks are probably just installed, I mean, our orange truck is huge. We've broken in the past since we've had that truck, we've probably broken three or four strip lights on that thing there, about three, four hundred bucks apiece.
Whoa, yeah, and that's a waste there.
So I'd rather trim it so we don't have that problem.
Yeah, I think we should have something in place though because, especially the truck routes. Trucks can go down, but they're getting, Daniel had four legs knocked out of his cattle trailer.
How tall is a truck?
How tall is a truck?
They need a 40-foot door.
Right.
That's why our tree ordinance is 15.
Well, unless we put it out there that if the city has to trim them, they have to send a bill. I mean, if you had bad trees in your backyard, you're gonna pay somebody to do it. I think.
So you want the city guys to go monitor everyone that trims a tree in the parking?
No, no.
That's what the ordinance says.
Yeah, I know, that's why to me it's a waste.
You gotta go find the ordinance.
Yeah, we need to change or update the ordinance. Because that's... And then they might end up coming back in here and doing it.
So do we want to put that ordinance, action on that ordinance or just, you know, what's set up?
Well, it's kind of hard to enforce it, but, yeah. They're telling them to do it, but yet our guys need to be there.
That's why we need to update it. City does it, do you pay?
So next meeting agenda to?
Discuss it.
To act on a new ordinance and set a public hearing? Or just discuss it?
I think we need to act on it. I think we pretty much still know what needs to happen.
Well, if we're gonna change the ordinance, we need, if we're gonna change the ordinance, we need a workshop on it to decide what we're gonna change it to.
We can do that if we're gonna talk about our dollars.
Did you hear Carol?
We have our, we're gonna do a workshop on dollars. We can probably do it at the same time.
Probably could.
Good.
Add another line.
Make it worth our while.
Any other?
All right. And I think in the meantime, Kelly wants to trim trees, so he's got room for this.
So be it.
I agree, yes.
Do it to your satisfaction, Kelly. Make sure you don't knock out stuff for yourself.
Okay, Michelle, is that all for you, Michelle?
Uh, I like to see I am at the wait room for drinks, Thursday, Friday. Um, a lot of good information I sent by two clerks that were very seasoned clerks. That was very nice. One was sending me emails with links on, that were helpful. She did recommend that I take a course that's offered by Iowa State Extension. She said it's very valuable, that I would learn a lot.
Where's that or when is that?
It's open, our webinar. It's, it's an extended, it's not just a two-day thing.
Okay, okay. Yeah, anything you can do to help, you know, that's great. Well, you can see one in November in Spencer.
For on budgeting.
Budgeting, so, and that's nice and close.
Yeah, take advantage of that.
That's one Carol Shaquen recommended. Carol Shaquen's one that one.
Okay, yep, I think that's a good one too. Catch that one.
With G-Works, by December 25, everyone has to be switched to a cloud-based, do a little over.
Closet software versus installing computers.
Oh, that's instead of the beacon?
No, G-Works.
Our system.
Oh, okay, so what are we doing?
So it won't save. It's gonna be in, everything's gonna be saved in the cloud.
Oh.
Access into the browser.
Yeah, it'll be inter-based. None of the clerks there were very excited about it.
I was gonna say.
They weren't excited about it, no.
Is the state mandating that or what?
If you're, if you're gonna work, use G-Works software, you're gonna have to switch to cloud-based or go to another software.
So do we need to look at a different software? We've talked about that a few times.
The majority of cities in Iowa use G-Works.
Okay. But are they gonna stay or didn't they say? They didn't say yet, did they?
You could get a coalition of city clerks together and fight this.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Because you know what's gonna happen when you get it on the cloud, you're gonna have all kinds of issues.
Right.
And you just expect that. Who needs that?
And I don't know if that's something that all the software companies are going to now that provide software like G-Works.
So G-Works is telling you you have to go to the cloud.
They will support this, what we have now.
It would say something Microsoft is doing, switching it to dollar amount? Haven't heard that yet.
And how soon?
By December 25.
Oh, my gosh, so it's not very long.
No, no.
December of 25.
Yeah. Oh, December, I thought you meant December 25th, you had to have it done. Oh, okay, now I feel better.
All the software companies are going to a cloud-based subscription model versus licensing. Okay?
What's that?
Any else?
No.
Let's see. We had somebody look at the clinic, Mercy Clinic, last week. They're gonna get back to us in a hopefully within a week or two and they took measurements and things like that. It would be a nice, it'd be a nice tenant or purchaser. But I'll, as they get, come back, then we can start talking about who they are if they come back and have an interest. So that's good, been working on that. And then kind of sitting back reading, it's like we're getting close to the end of the year. I don't know, I think our workshop will now be full if it's on, on an ordinance and financing. But then what I'd like us to do, either a workshop or a discussion item coming up here before the end of the year, is relook at what are our priorities for 2025. This, this year's kind of gotten burned up just learning, catching up, things like that, so. Michelle, is another?
Plus our big projects that we're doing.
Oh, totally, yeah, that's, a lot of those projects are catch-up, different projects.
They gotta get done.
Yep, exactly, so. Look at what our focus is for the next year, so be thinking about that as well. Any comments from city council members? I have just come, this is just for information, right, Michelle, the DGR.
That's on, right, that was on the additional things.
Yep. Okay. Then another question I had, and maybe you gave this to us, but what about the traitions report?
Then another question I had, and maybe you gave this to us, but what about the trade report and the revenue?
I have it right here. I just have it out, I'll put it together.
Okay, that's all I had.
It's, it's the best I could do. Yeah, I was pretty crunched and.
Oh, that's fine.
We're good.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, anything else, councilman?
We are gonna interview, uh, another police officer, well, or applicant that we got a while back, so we're gonna talk to him tomorrow afternoon. So Gene and I and Nate. Are we gonna do that here or? Yeah, usually we just go in the lounge room.
Okay.
Anyhow.
Good. Yeah, that's good. Any other committee reports? Departments, police, Nate?
Nothing beyond, like some unmentionability.
Fires, here. They had their, uh, if everybody got a chance to get by their last Monday night, there's an article in the review over the week on Saturday about Palena's new fire station, the hope for. We're starting to get a lot of questions about, about that and all the way from structure to closure. There seems to be some, you know, some good vibes out there about it and some concern about how do we fund splash parks and fire stations and projects and all those things, so.
Does the pickleball need approval?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah, that's what.
We might have to put it over on the.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's in the budget we covered pickleball, it was just something that was put there to help.
Yeah, those things are.
But we, we took that and used that for airports.
Library airport. Anything else? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Immediately adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you all.